Hello and thank you so very much for joining me tonight. I go by Luna needs and what I'm creating for you today for the collective could simply be a relaxing video. Could also be a method for you to communicate to your subconscious mind and do a little reprogramming, revamping or just programming in general. Or an and if you're open to the concept of energy work by proxy. I am an esoteric healing arts practitioner and teacher. I teach classes almost every Saturday and I've been doing this work for five years or so now. Um professionally like with clients and I've been very lucky to work with many, many clients and experience a lot of different revelations through the work, like through the practice. So this is just my attempt to create something for anyone who stumbles across it and resonates. And that's all I'm looking to do and create here is just provide a space of sorts to come and have a relaxing experience. Okay, so of course we're gonna start with our candle, but let me first tell you what our intention that we're working with today is, although I'm sure you can kind of tell from the title of the video. But we're going to be working with the concept of mistakes, of sidestepping, of feeling like we're off track or we made the wrong decision. Failure, you know, and it's not really the most fun thing to think about, but we all deal with it. We all deal with this and when we can alchemize the experience of the failure or mistake, we can extract essentially the gold of the experience, the lesson, the knowledge, the appreciation, the connections we might have made or just the discovery of what doesn't work. So we can more better determine and act in ways that are more supportive or more aligned or more successful, so to speak, of what our attempt is, you know, the attempts that we're making here. So I'll be the first to say, and I've said it before, but I failed many businesses. I've started websites, I've hired people to help me create websites and invested so much into different things, you know, like little things and they've all failed. So sorry for being loud, but they've all failed, you know, and they were all successes in my reflection because they taught me about things that work for me and what don't and how to adapt and how to let things go and how to be more in alignment with my ultimate truth and myself. And here I am, you know, so doing really work that I absolutely love to do. So we're gonna start with our candle and intention. And we're first going to dress our candle in the specific mystic incense from Deschampsia. They like hand forage all of their ingredients. Hey, hey guys. Hey, Jessica. Right, so I'm just gonna take a little of this yummy incense, just like loose. And sprinkle it into our candle here. There's some resins I can feel. I'm just grinding it up with my fingers with the intention to release or activate the potency of our intention. I love this. It reminds me of my grandmother. We're gonna be using this later in our session, but I'm gonna add some to the candle too. This is cypress essential oil, pure essential oil and it's very beneficial for overcoming. So we're just gonna add, I don't know how many there was, I hope it was six, but if it wasn't, that's okay. It's pretty liquidy. Alright, so let's light our candles with these incense matches. Excuse me. That one pretty crazy. Cool. That was really cool. I don't see that happen very often. So on behalf of the highest and greatest good and perfect comfort and alignment, our intention is to of course support your overall empowerment, your overall alignment, well-being, your clarity and empowerment of thought, your mental field, of your spiritual connection, of your path, your passions, your desires, your manifestations, your physical well-being, of course, you know, we'll hold that in our intention as well. But to drill down a little more precisely, our intention today is to support the alchemization, is that a word? To alchemize our regrets or our losses or our failures or our endings, you know, endings that perhaps we didn't choose to end so quickly or something like that. And take the gold from the experience lending it to never be reflected on in such a way that is regretful or wasted in some capacity. We want it to bring into us the flexibility, the compassion we have, the um cheerleader kind of energy that we can have for ourselves to support our ultimate drive and momentum of, you know, I don't want to make it this like kind of um superficial way or this uh, I mean this from like your deepest passions, right? And like what is most meaningful to you and your soul. But to support and not hinder that development through being able to reflect on what has been and take from it that golden experience that um, what's the word? Priceless kind of lesson of direct experience and authenticity through what we've been through. Alright, and if you have a specific thing you'd like to focus on with this theme, a specific thing you'd like to focus on with this theme, please have a look at this little flame here and send your wish, your intention, your will, communicate to your subconscious what you would like to receive out of this, to let go of that burden of feeling like we can't do something or it didn't work out that one time and then that other time, so I'm gonna throw it away. It's okay, like I've thrown stuff away, but I still keep with me of course the lessons and it only leads to, you know, a success of sorts, right? And of course, I mean this in the highest expression of these words, alright? Okay. I have quite a few stones here to share with you on this subject and minerals, I guess. The first is this piece of rock salt, this Himalayan pink salt. And I love this for cleansing, so if this resonates with you, you can use this session solely, but I would suggest as well some kind of bath or rebirth of sorts, you know, an intentional rebirth, a shower, washing your face, even just using mouthwash or something, you know, can be symbolic of a cleanse of sorts. And you just want to leave behind, you know, in the, in the water and the cleanse when you spat, stuff like that, to let go of the um burden that we carry when we feel like we've failed at something. It used to kind of eat me up and I thought I wasted so much money, so much resources, so much time. But I wouldn't trade any of those experiences at this point because they really have provided me with tools and understanding that I use today, even in different ways, you know, different avenues. So we're gonna use this and just sweep through. If you are collecting, letting that salt suck out. Any like little thorn or um kind of tether or hook that is making you feel like you can't take the next step or try again or whatever it might be for you. Dare to dream, right? Regarding, you know, where you feel called to build in your life. Going down the back, particularly now focusing on, you know, how other people hold us that way. Um someone very, very close to me who I know, once only the best for me, um kind of got in my head once talking about this, like, oh yeah, you start stuff, you'd never finish it, like those kind of words were said to me. And it really like, you know, is it someone I know loves me and wasn't saying it to her. My feelings were just to share their honest kind of perspective. But it got in my head and it made me feel like, damn, like I don't finish things, hmm, like I suck. Or, you know, whatever. So I'm focusing on the ears now. But that's not true. I'm just being guided by my heart and it's time to move on, it's time to move on. With something, when you try and fail, you tried. It's okay. I'd like to think of that too in terms of relationships, right? Because we can really get in our heads about why something didn't work out or why we forced it or why it ended, can feel like failures, especially through divorce or if you have children or something with someone and you feel like you're ruining the family. You know, unsuccessful at that attempt. But it's all for a reason and it all teaches you, gives you gifts of experience, I mean. And everything is in some kind of divine order. I really do believe that. So we're still just kind of cleansing the mind, the energy field, the higher mind and down around to the base of the skull to address the like really pushed to the back sub-thought of how we view our challenges, our failures. Forget the word, it's just the best word I can think of because we feel like failures is why I say that. Alright, and a similar theme with the back of the mind, I have this kombapa stone, one of my favorites. And this can be so useful at the back of the head here, the base of the skull. We were talking about those subliminal effects and I'm focused on channeling through to the back of the neck here. Excuse me, base of the skull, back of the neck kind of spot, connecting points. Mouth of God, seed of God, they call it something like that, the seal point. To channel through support with the beliefs we have over our failures, our missteps, our botched, botched experiences. To begin to untangle, unravel and let go of the um, they caught fibers almost or they caught connecting threads and hooks that make us knotted up, unable to process and we just kind of push it in the back and don't delve into it for that extraction. So we're just focusing on loosening up these beliefs, these patterns, these thought patterns. So we can see all of this as a success and not in a um Pollyannaic way, is that the word? Not in a ostrich kind of way. But more so in a different kind of truths. Alright, I'm just gonna go up and down, back here. Alright, it's great. Alright, another stone we're gonna work with is this elastial quartz. And I really want to show you something specific here, I hope I can. It's right here under my finger. I hope you can see it, but there is a face right there. Self-healed face kind of being born in this crystal. This crystal was damaged in some way in the earth from a shifting plate or who knows? And it got kind of cracked or whatever. And in the um continued growth or development of the crystal, it began to self-heal and create a new face within the stone. How awesome. And I just love what beauty it lends to the stone here specifically. But also the reminder, you know, that we can be wounded in ways and still continue to grow, like still from that mistake or that chop or whatever happened, right? The stone within it began a new face, a new um, I don't know what to call it in crystal terms, but keeps going on, finds a way, you know? Elastial crystals are quite like skeletal, they have, they're known as skeletal quartz as well. And this one has a pair, right? They're like two, two um double terminated points together here. So very, very cool. There's even a little bit of like a scepter kind of daily going on or something at the bottom. But we wanted to bring it up for that self-healing face. Alright. Here I have a piece of morganite, not a particularly jemmy piece of morganite. It actually kind of looks like a um peach filled bar, but it is morganite. I think I got it from Bliss Crystals or something on Etsy. And this is very good for quieting the mind, so we want to work with soothing the mind a little because it loves to bring up like the facts of like, no, no, you did waste money, no, you did waste time. No, 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 but and that criticism really comes in strong. So we're going to just focus on the throat area and specifically kind of quieting the mind, quieting that criticism, that hyper-analysis of like, it's not, not true, but it's not helping either sometimes. So we're gonna focus on soothing and quieting the mind, alright? So I'm just gonna shift the focus for you. And focus on the throat, just quieting the space, soothing the mental field. The criticism, just the whisper just turns so light, so soft. Just tempering that excess, that hyper-thought. I'm just gonna go down a little past the core, go back up. We don't always know in what way we've been prepared, you know, through our less than successful experiences or the way we may perceive them. But it's preparation. Even um dealing with infertility and all the times you may, or you or someone you know or someone you love or a friend may have felt like a failure. And I say that with such compassion because I've been there, I've genuinely been there myself. And then to realize that it, you know, if we're lucky enough, we can realize that it's preparing us for something else. It's preparing us for a type of unconditional love in a way that we might not have been able to authentically access as easily if something came so easy, you know, so. Alright, I'm just gonna place this right here. Then have this really cool little optical calcite. And this is like a window type of calcite to help with clarity, seeing things differently. So my intention here is to support, I'm focusing on the eyes specifically because it's meaningful to me. But to be able to see how so often a misstep, and it's not because of you, I don't mean you misstep, but where we feel like, oh, that didn't work out or oh, I was just wrong, like my gut instinct felt is, I guess, wrong or just anything that makes us not trust ourself and our ability to honestly reflect on how this happens to all of us and how sometimes and so often, so often these mistakes or these missteps or these things that don't work out are truly guiding you to what is for you. A relationship didn't work out, there's something better for you. A job didn't work out, there's one that's more aligned for you. A um package gets lost in the mail, they're gonna send you a new one and then you're gonna find that one you're getting it to. I'm being silly of course here a little bit, but there are so many ways that this can play out, right? Didn't mean to make it so superficial, but I want to focus on the eye area here and really work with the shift and this is the golden color if you can tell with the extraction of the gold of the experience and how this is guiding you on your path even when we want something so badly, but it's just not for us, then we have to let it go. Alright, so I'm gonna focus on a shift in vision here. And your ability to see more clearly, more expertly, reflect on your experiences. Take the gold, trust the guiding force of divine timing, of happenstance. Just go up and down. Addressing the third eye as well, the subconscious mind, the subliminal mind as well to access those programs and just more easily define and witness rather, discern and witness that truth of your experience and being guided on it even by what we think as a mistake or something must be wrong here. Hello, I'm supposed to do this. Well, there might be something bigger and better and absolutely more perfect for you. Okay. And my last crystal is this really beautiful um aquamarine. It's so cool looking. Trying to get the like shiny bits to show for you. I hope you can see some of these little flashes. But I really feel a lot of like the star energy and aquamarine, the um perfection, the form, the channel. It's just so like peaceful to me, you know? So I'm bringing this in to help us make peace with our experiences. It's hard, right? When there is um unreciprocated feelings or you know, anything like that going on from people, from jobs, from opportunities and all this kind of stuff. But there's just this trust and peace really that I want to kind of work through and channel focusing with this aquamarine, okay? So we're gonna connect to these concepts of peace, tranquility, higher thoughts, higher understanding, higher consciousness, that broader perspective. And just drag it through like a little message or seed or pod to clear the channels of receptivity and creation, to bring a comfortable neutrality. Just allow that into the system here. Also from Deschampsia is this new moon and cancer eclipse spray. I just love the nurturing kind of feelings, so it's like, it's okay to baby yourself. To love yourself in a nurturing, supportive, encouraging way. We're gonna bring in again the cypress. I'm just gonna like channel by move through. It's gonna let my intuition kind of guide my movements. To activate these polarity hands, a positive magnet, a negative magnet, a positive charge, a negative charge. Clearing, bringing in, fresh, releasing what would be served to release. Focus the back of the neck here, like this area. Focusing on empowering the back to protect us from those people who, even though they love us so much, they think, "Oh yeah," they never stick with it, or whatever, whatever their thoughts are. Unless they are holding us in an empowered state, let's reject other people's, like energetic force that potentially influences us, makes us feel more doubtful, or more wobbly. Excuse me. Just gonna do a little more cypress. Coat the auric field, the etheric fields, and command them to take on a certain layer of protection, equality of confidence, equality of trust in your ability, trust in your path, trust in what is for you will always be for you. Well, I hope that you enjoyed our little session today. I just wanna thank you so very much for allowing me to share a little piece of your path today, and for you being such a big part of mine. Wanna especially thank, of course, those of you in Patreon, thank you so much, you're changing my life. The, you know, YouTube algorithm, and all of, YouTube is amazing, but it's kind of unreliable, you know, so having Patreon as this place to feel a bit more grounded and secure is so, so I'm so grateful for it, so thank you so much. And of course, thank you as well to those of you I've been so blessed to work with for regular training and attendance. It's my favorite thing ever, and we do it like almost every Saturday, so thank you so much for that opportunity. And I just wanna send you so much love, so from the very bottom of my heart, I bow to the divine within you and I, and this beautiful connection, and kind of unexplainable, and kind of probably a little odd connection that we share. Much love to you, and namaste.